And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are at the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, which is for anything that's on tonight's agenda. Does anyone wish to comment? Yes, Ms. Whitten.
Good evening. I have five pictures I wish to share with you pursuant to item B on the consent agenda, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, with a nod also to 6A. Photo number one, I feel we have taken a step backward when our city has chosen to use Roundup to maintain road edges. It appears selectively, oh, selectivity was minimal as number one illustrates a typical scene throughout our city where the grass was already maintained by the owner. The dead grass is a stark contrast against the remaining green, and it has cost man hours and the environment as well. We were not notified to keep pets off application until product was dry, which is troubling considering our neighborhood walks pets at all hours. Number two, please. Thank you. More troubling is proximity of application to storm sewer drains. Please note the overgrowth, which is against code at derelict property that was addressed last year but goes unchecked once again this year. Number three. Another example of application even closer to the saltwater at Tracy and Bay Street. These photos are not isolated instances, but merely a sampling of what has occurred around our storm sewers. And number four. A tribute to Blackjack Creek, and yet the picture contradicts everything it has been my understanding we are striving for, as number five illustrates. Only rain down the drain, Puget Sound starts here. It is notable that the MSDS is dated 2007. Even the novice knows there have been developments concerning the presence of glyphosate in the environment since then worth investigating. Also notable is 51.3% of remaining ingredients are unidentified because, quote, "The specific chemical identity is being withheld because it is trade secret information of Monsanto Company." I am calling to our city management to act with restraint and curb the use of Roundup. Our streets will be nicer looking, our pets safer, and our environment protected by those of us who have been entrusted with its vigilant care. Let us lead in this way. And I might note that today I went up and I checked Paul's Bow, drove around Silverdale. There's a lot of places that aren't doing this. I know the county looks like they are, but this is the first time that we've had a brown stripe down the front of our property. And I know it's city easement, but we do maintain it, and it's, it's been done everywhere. And I just, I just plead with you to just use it vigilantly if you have to use it at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment on items on the agenda this evening? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to approve the consent agenda at chance?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. We have two, no presentations, and we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on an ordinance creating a new chapter of Port Orchard Municipal Code, 20.212 Dangerous and Unfit Dwellings and Buildings and Structures. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. There are buildings and structures in the city that are dangerous or unfit to occupy, which the owners fail or refuse to correct, and which attract crime, contribute to neighborhood deterioration, and pose a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants and to the public. The council has decided that the city should expend public funds to abate such buildings and structures, and has allocated funds to do so. The city's current Dangerous Buildings Abatement Code, the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, has not been updated for consistency with court rulings or other laws, nor to conform to the provisions of RCW 3580, which provides the best chance of recovering public funds spent abating dangerous buildings and structures. New regulations conforming to the provisions of RCW 3580 will enable the city to more effectively address such buildings and structures and to recover the public funds spent to do so. The staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, and this ordinance is proposed to be included in the adoption of the Unified Development Code being brought forward in June.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing on the new chapter of Municipal Code, Dangerous and Unfit Dwellings and Buildings and Structures. No one has signed up. Is anyone wishing to testify? Mr. Whittleton?
Mr. Whittleton? I applaud the DCD and the Land Use Committee for bringing forward the first half of the ordinance to protect citizens and city from landowners with little or no regard or pride in ownership. This ordinance will make cleanup of dangerous properties of our city achievable. I look forward to the second half dealing with the derelict buildings throughout our commercial areas. Thank you.
Others wishing to comment on this public hearing for the... Okay, hearing none. Now we'll close the public hearing. Okay, there's no action to be taken tonight on this matter. We'll move on to the second public hearing. It's a public hearing on proposed updates to the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 20.204 Fire Prevention Code and 20.206 Fire Safety Existing Buildings. Mr. Bond?
South Kitsap Fire and Rescue has proposed updates and local amendments to the Fire Prevention Code, Chapter 1512, and Fire Sprinkler Code 1514. These local amendments to the Fire Prevention Code include the elimination of the International Fire Code, Appendix A, a prohibition on skylanterns, a prohibition on the use of firewalls to define separate buildings and requirements, and requirements for maintenance and reporting for fire protection systems. Other minor corrections are also included. The proposed amendments to the Fire Sprinkler Code are necessary to remove, to remove city imposed requirements that are now standard in the International Fire Code. Previously, the city's fire sprinkler requirements were more stringent than those which were required in the IFC. Now this section is only needed to ensure that existing buildings, those that have been built, or that have not been updated since 1998, comply with fire codes, achieve a greater degree of fire protection and safety. The requirements include annual inspections, verification of smoke detectors, fire pre-planning, evacuation planning, fire safety training, and ongoing safety evaluations. In addition, the Fire Sprinkler Chapter will be renamed Fire Safety Existing Buildings to better reflect its current purpose. The revised Fire Prevention Chapter and the renamed Fire Safety Existing Building Chapter will be included in Title 20, the Unified Land Use and Development Code, as Title 20.204 and .206 respectively. This is under consideration for adoption in June of this year, and the Planning Commission just recommended approval of that at its meeting last Wednesday. The recommendation on this item is to conduct a public hearing and receive testimony on the proposed revisions. And again, this will be brought forward again for adoption in June.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. It's time I'll open the public hearing on the proposed Fire Prevention Code and Fire Safety Code. No one has signed up to testify. Is anyone wishing to testify on this matter? I know Mr. Wiggins from our work study was, has since that time, has met with the stakeholders as we asked, and so with that, if no one's wanting to testify, I will close the public hearing. So we're on to our business items. First is 7A, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 13.04, Water Sewer Plan Review and Inspection Fees and Policies. Mr. Bond?
The past practice of the city has been to review water and sewer, water and sewer system plans in conjunction with an SDAP application made to the city. This practice was never explicitly codified. The city wishes to add language to the water and sewer code to clearly state that plan review of water and sewer system improvements is to be performed in conjunction with one of the three other permit types, and to set fees for review and inspection of these improvements. Water and sewer fees are codified rather than set by resolution. As such, this ordinance is being brought forward separately from the city's fee resolution. Staff recommends that council approve the attached ordinance concerning water and sewer review and inspection fees and fee policies. And I'd like to add that Public Works and my department worked on this together. The new Assistant City Engineer, Thomas Hunter, Mark and I, we all reviewed this together, and I think we've come to a workable solution between the changes in the fee resolution and this chapter when they're combined. So the recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented.
So Thomas got a motion to Assistant Engineer?
Huh?
It was Mike Pleasant?
Yeah.
Our Assistant City Engineer and Thomas is our Public Works Supervisor. Anyway, Cindy? Okay. A motion and a second to approve that the code is presented. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Deener?
Just a question. You said that water and sewer fees are codified rather than set by resolution. Could they be done by resolution?
They could. We had a conversation about adding language to the water code that would say that the water and sewer review fees would be set by resolution, and it was just for consistency's sake, we put all of the water and sewer stuff in the same chapter, but we could have done it a different way.
Have we been charging these fees and just haven't codified them, or are these new fees?
Well, remember, remember that we adopted the new Stormwater and Land Disturbing Activity Code in December, and so prior to that, we had issued a Site Development Activity Permit, which the permit, I guess the authority for that was in the Stormwater Chapter of the code, but when somebody applied for that type of permit, their plans included water and sewer system improvements. And so the time spent reviewing those permits was captured in the Stormwater Permit Fee. And so this is, this is formally separating that review and making this a surcharge to that permit rather than rolling it into the, the overall Site Development Activity Permit. I think our practice was actually, the county has one Site Development Activity Permit, and so we sort of followed their lead, and I don't know that it was ever separated.
Yes, Mr. Deener?
So I just have a follow-up on my first question. If it were up to you in your ideal state, would you want these fees done by resolution rather than by ordinance?
I don't, I don't really have a preference one way or another. I think that these, these are fees that probably aren't needing to be reviewed as frequently as, as other review types. Building permits obviously are based on building valuation, and that's updated every six months. I think if, if you've seen, we've brought the fee resolution forward probably six or seven times in the last three or four years, and most things don't change from year to year, and I would, I would put this into the category of things that aren't changing frequently. But if it, if it was going to change more frequently, I would say that it should be in the resolution just for ease of adoption.
Yes, back?
One more question. Were these reviewed at our utility committee?
No, they weren't. The, and the need for this came up, I guess, we started working on this because of fire tent, temporary tent structure permits, and because we realized that some of our fees were set too high. And as we got into this, we wanted to, to fix the Stormwater and the Land Disturbing Activity Permits, but we realized that we needed the authority, we wanted the explicit authority in the water and sewer code, and so this was sort of a, a late addition, but we have at least two projects that are waiting for the fee resolution to be updated, and we felt that this needed to be acted on more quickly than we had time to get it to a committee.
And we did vet it through home builders.
Other questions? Okay, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 13.04, Water Sewer Plan Review Inspection Fees and Policies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 007-17 and Establishing Fee Schedules for the Department of Community Development and Public Works. Mr. Bond?
The city regularly reviews its permit fee resolution to ensure that all permit fees are set at prescribed, as prescribed, at net levels which are sufficient to cover the cost of administration. The attached fee resolution has been updated to update the Stormwater Drainage Permit and Plan Review Fee, adopt a Land Disturbing Activity Permit and Plan Review Fee, eliminate the fee for temporary tent or membrane structures, adopt the most recent August 2016 Building Valuation Table, adopt a miscellaneous plumbing fixture charge, and adopt critical areas code review and permit fees. There were a couple of items that weren't explicitly listed in the previous resolution that we realized we needed to have. So the recommendation is to adopt the resolution as presented.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there a second?
Second.
As you recall, if you recall, last meeting, I mentioned that one of these was this membrane tent, that we didn't feel that was a fair fee for what we were intending it to do, so that's why it's being removed.
And please note that the resolution authorizes the refund of anybody who previously paid a tent membrane fee permit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, any, any other questions? Hearing, okay. We're adopting, voting on the resolution to repeal Resolution Number 07-17 and Establishing Fee Schedules for the Department of Community Development and Public Works. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. We are on to 7C, Approval of Change Order Number One to Contract Number 026-17 with Holt Services, Inc., for the well number eight pump replacement and documenting procurement. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council members. On March 28, 2017, the City of Port Orchard, City Council approved contract 02617 with Holt Services for the well number eight pump replacement project in an amount of $31,058.46. An unfortunate change of condition has occurred whereby the existing 378-foot-long-by-six-inch-diameter drop pipe needs to be replaced. The well casing scrubbed, and, and the casing bailed, and a new wellhead with sounding tubes installed. The cost associated with this additional work is $18,036.23. Staff recommends the City Council authorize the mayor to execute change order number one to small works contract C02617 with Holt Services in an amount not to exceed $18,036.23, tax included, thereby bringing the new contract total to $49,094.69 for the well eight pump and motor replacement project.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor, that would be you, to execute change order number one to small works contract number C02617 with Holt Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $18,036.23, tax included, thereby bringing the new contract total to $49,094.69 for the well number eight pump and motor replacement project.
A second? Motion and a second. Mr. Chang? This was shared with the utility committee with pictures that the pipe that draws the water out of the well was like Swiss cheese, so this is an important well to, to our oil system, and we need to get it back online before the summer season when we're, we're needing a lot more water, so. Any other questions on this matter? Okay, we'll be voting on a change order number one to contractor, contract number 026-7 with Holt Services, Inc., for the well number eight pump replacement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7D, which is the approval of the May 9 council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I move to approve the May 9, 2017 council meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections of the minutes? Mr. Clausen, I assume you'll be abstaining from that, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and one abstention. All right, we are on to item E. And that was just more I wanted to bring forward. A year ago, Doug Price came and gave a presentation at Work Study Session, and he brought a number of pictures forward with dangerous and derelict buildings in our community, and I just wanted to show you, show some of the progress that, that his work has, has been very successful in correcting a number of these properties. Our plan is, is that, that from this point forward, we'll take the ones that have been corrected with the red lines slashed through them off of our list, and there's more to add, and we'll, you know, we'll manage it, bring, maybe bring that forward at a future meeting, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of, that there is progress, and, you know, Mr. Price is, is doing a darn good job. You can see in particular, one of those was a derelict building that's got a brand-new home on the lot now. Questions of me or Mr. Bond?
I just, good work. You know, there's, there's six structures that have been removed on this list, and one replaced, and others on their way, and another that's in partial remodel, so that's what we're hoping to see.
Yes, absolutely.
My hats off to Mr. Price as well for, he's, he's very thorough, he's very deliberate, methodical, and thorough, and, and this proves it.
The public hearing we had earlier tonight will give us a little better tools for him and, and the ability for us to recover some of those funds as we go forward, as we lean properties, so. Okay, we are going to move on to 7F, which is Approval to Waive Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 5.60.0152B, Fireworks Permit Forms and Deadlines. Mr. Martin isn't here this, this evening, so I will take a reformatting. The city regulates public displays of fireworks within the city limits through a permit process and state licensing requirements. Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 5.60 states, sets a deadline for application no later than 4:30 PM, 40 days prior to the date of an intended public display. 5.60.015, firework permit forms and deadlines 2B. The Halo Fireworks Company hand-delivered an application for public display of fireworks along Port Orchard's waterfront on May 19, nine days after the deadline. Port Orchard Municipal Code does not provide an administrative waiver or staff discretion for accepting applications after the deadline. Council is being asked to consider a motion to waive the 40-day deadline and accept the application for processing. The motion does not waive any deadline or conditions of South Kitsap Fire District, the State of Washington, Chapters 70.77, RCW, or any other law, regulation, or provision. The motion is restricted to the waiver of at least 40 days prior business, days prior to the date of application deadline set in Port Orchard Municipal Code 5.60 fireworks. Recommendation is to accept the Halo Fireworks 2017 Public Fireworks Display Application as timely. Donald?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to accept the 2017 Halo Fireworks Public Display Application as timely and waive the 40-day business deadline. Forty-business day deadline.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Deener? A motion and a second, discussion?
Do we know the reason why this was delayed nine days?
Clerk Reinderson? No, it's our...
We do not know why they did not submit the application on time. It's the same organization that's been providing the fireworks display, I believe, for the last couple of years. I know historically, the clerk's office has always reminded the agency and was on track of that. When it switched over to Finance Department, I think it just lacked the reminder, but again, the code is the one that states that this is, hey, it has to be 40 days. They know it. It's been around for a long time, and I think we just wasn't able to remind them in time.
It is our fathoms display on the bay.
My question is, do we have time to review the application through normal channels with the delay?
It's my, it's my understanding that the process time is still...
Okay, okay.
It doesn't, and it doesn't waive the fire districts or the state's requirements. I don't know that we have a whole lot to do with the review in Public Works.
Typically, they drop off all the applications, the permits, the license. I did review the documentation, and everything seems to be up-to-date, current, in everything that we need. And once we receive that, of course, they pay their fee, then the complete application's handed over to the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue for them to go ahead and start the process and inspection.
Yes, Mr. Chang?
I have just a simple question for you, Brandy. I'm still struggling with the dates. So they're going to deploy this on our July 4th? So what was the 40-day deadline? Because was it, it was not July 4th, obviously. We're going for another deadline.
Um, I believe it's 40...
Business days.
Forty-business days.
Okay, not calendar days, but business days, okay.
Correct.
We missed it by nine days, Mr. Deener.
And the 40-business days is, is so that there's enough time for all parties to look at it, so if we don't feel like that was a big deal to us, then we're okay with it.
And this isn't a new display. It's just something that fell through the cracks. Other questions? Comments? Okay. Voting on Approval to Waive Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 5.60.0152B, Fireworks Permits, Forms, and Deadlines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7G, Approval of, of an amended contract, number 033-17 with Kitsap Harbor Tours, Inc., City of Bremerton, Kitsap County, for the 2017 Extended Summer Foot Ferry Service. Mr. Clausen, are you going to step out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion.
Clerk Reinderson?
Yes. So previously, the council has approved the contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours, City of Bremerton, and Kitsap County. After the City Council approved this application on April 11, the city was contacted by Kitsap Transit, informing them that they are picking up the service, services on Monday, September 4, 2017, up until 6:30 PM. And typically, we run all the way up until 7:00 PM. So what we've done is amended the contract to only cover instead of, let me tell you, instead of 10 hours that day, we're only picking up a half hour for that particular day. They are also picking up the Memorial Day Monday, but we, we typically don't provide that additional service, so just for the, the members of the, the audience and the public, that foot ferry service will be running this Monday as well as Labor Day Monday. So this contract just basically amends that, that date. All the other terms and conditions apply. Based on the updated estimated cost, it's still under budget.
Is there a motion? Mr. Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the contract authorizing the mayor to execute the amended joint agreement with Kitsap Harbor Tours, Incorporated, the City of Bremerton, and Kitsap County for additional summer foot ferry services in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Luke Orelli, you have a, a question?
I don't have a question. I have a comment on the, the motion. I, I don't think the motion, the motion is for us to approve the contract, or that's our intent of what we're doing?
I think we're amending...
Amended contract.
Or amending the contract, and all we're doing is amending the day, the, the time on the Monday of Labor Day weekend.
Correct.
But our motion says that we're amending that for additional summer foot ferry service is in an amount not to exceed $7,000. We don't need to include any money there. The money is not part of the amendment. The amendment is just changing the hours of service for that day.
Correct, and I apologize. I failed to correct the motion when I prepared the staff report. report.
Is it cleaner for Mr. Deener to make an amendment or amend his original motion? Do you want to restate your motion?
Yeah, why don't I restate my motion? I move to approve the contract authorizing the mayor to execute the amended joint agreement with Kitsap Harbor Tours Incorporated, the City of Bremerton, and Kitsap County for additional summer foot ferry services.
Second.
Motion and a second, and basically, it just strikes the dollar amount is the difference there. Other questions or comments? Nice catch. We'll be voting on the amendment of the contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are to council committee reports. Mr. Clausen's coming back just in time to give his finance committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the finance committee met on Monday morning, and we reviewed the sales tax receipts for which we have none. It was just that we met before the sales tax distribution took place, so we didn't really have current information. So, we also went through, as we normally do each finance committee, the, essentially, the cash flow projections, the REIT money. All is moving along as budgeted and as planned, so there's really nothing out of the ordinary to report there. We then talked a bit about the timing and cash flow projections for the Tremont Road Project, and the treasurer provided us with a spreadsheet that indicates when they anticipate the disbursed, disbursements to occur, which month, and then it is set up to where they can actually fill in as the project moves forward, and we can kind of get a month-to-month status report on, on where we are with the various funding sources that's going to pay for that. We also talked a bit about the Tremont Project with Mark Dorsey was there and shared with us kind of the bidding. They've delayed the bid opening by one week. That, I believe it is now June 6th. June 6th, we expect to open the bids, so we're all anxiously awaiting that to happen. And then, we also talked briefly. The mayor presented a couple of things for us. One was some standardization he's proposing with our vehicle procurement, which makes an awful lot of sense from an operational standpoint. Currently, we have somewhat of a mixture of makes and models within our fleet, and it does add to the cost and expenses of maintaining, maintaining the vehicles along with maintaining the parts necessary to do some of the standard maintenance as well. So, I think there's going to be more to come with that.
Correct.
But I think the committee was very supportive of the concept of standardization so that we can try to get some benefits from economies of scale. He also presented some proposed organizational changes, which I think will be coming forward at a later council meeting that the committee reviewed with the mayor and endorsed the proposal that he's bringing forward. So, the rest of the council will see that at an upcoming meeting. And then, we also talked briefly about your comment that you raised on the issue of reimbursements, and what we determined what, what had changed was that you were reimbursed improperly last year. It was not in one of the events that's listed in the ordinances to an event that the council has supported collectively our tenants at. So, it's up to the council to either request money back from you, or the council has the ability to approve that expenditure for which I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the expenditure that was made last year for councilmember Luke Correlli to attend a meeting that was not in the list of approved meetings.
I would second that. So, I get a motion and a second to approve the expenditure that happened last year for, it was the, one of the home builders' meetings, and it just wasn't on the list of approved expenditures. The list, though, does offer an opportunity for the council to approve any other expenditures. So, it's completely appropriate to take the action that you guys are about to consider. So, other questions of that matter? All in favor of approving that expenditure, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Do I recuse myself?
That's it.
Do I have to recuse myself on that one?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Why not? Why don't you? Why don't you recuse yourself?
Abstain, abstain.
Or abstain, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You abstain from that vote.
We could vote no.
So, we have one abstention. Six in favor, none opposed, and one abstention.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also add that we, three of the members in attendance, unfortunately, Sean, you had to leave early, but we had chosen June 26th as a upcoming meeting. That's going to work for you.
Yeah, I got that email. That's great.
7:30 AM here, City Hall.
Economic Development and Tourism?
Yes, we've not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be June 12th, 9 o'clock here in council chambers.
Thank you. And Utilities, have you met?
Yes, we met May 15th, and the highlight of our meeting, or there's about four points, we discussed the touch read water meters. This is something, actually, the city has been working on over a period of time. Apparently, we have about 3,000 meters in the city, 500 left to transfer over. The idea being that, of course, touch read allows for less labor to be involved in reading of these meters. Why we do that rather than an electronic read is that we keep a better pulse to what's really going on with our meters. So, if there's any kind of bubbling up or leakage, we've got personnel out there to be viewing that. But it really does save on time. So, we're moving forward with that. We're, we've been doing 60 to 100 meters conversions per year, and we may be working on increasing that depending on our resources. We talked about the City Hall boiler, and of course, you've heard already that we're going to just be putting some money into that because we've got quite a few years left with that boiler system. We talked about the street lighting, a marquee. That's an ongoing discussion, and you've got to report about that.
I got an update for that, yeah.
Okay. Another thing we talked about is, well, we've been talking about some well updates, and number eight we had on our agenda this evening. Well, number 13, we're going to be moving forward with that, and there's some progress that is going to be made quite soon with clearing some areas so that we can move in there to start our drilling, which should be happening very soon. So, a lot going on with public works. Our next meeting is going to be, let's see, June 19th, 9:30 AM here at City Hall.
Super advisory?
We're working on a date for our next meeting. It's possible that it will be June 14th at 6:30 PM, but I will confirm that.
Okay. Is the land use met?
The land use committee met on Wednesday, May 17th, at 7:30. It's the shortest meeting, I think, I've had with the group, half hour. The first item we talked about was the Peninsula Feed and their lease agreement. They're up for a renewal of their lease, and we, I think, realize that we need to understand better what parts of the area they want to lease, including perhaps some of the parking spaces. And John, I think you were going to talk to Peninsula Feed about what areas they'd like to consider. The second brief item was a discussion about City Hall facility rental rates and how that fee structure has not been updated since 1999. Then, it's an average hourly rate. The third item was a discussion about parking in the downtown area, as well as a request by a taxi company for a taxi stand in the downtown area. And we talked a little bit about that, felt that while it was worthwhile to consider the Sydney Museum for a loading zone, it didn't make sense to provide another loading or taxi parking space in downtown, that there was adequate availability of existing taxi parking spaces. And then, the last item was a brief discussion about vacant commercial buildings, and some of you may recall that we asked about other models used in the state, and there's a couple that were referenced. Vancouver, which has more of an incentive-based approach to vacant buildings, providing help with permitting assistance, consultation with staff on change of use and what it would take to get a different use going in a building, providing perhaps access to incentives, state, local, or federal incentives. And then, the other jurisdiction we talked a little bit about was Everett, and they have a different approach to their vacant buildings, which includes having minimum maintenance requirements in code. So, you, you have to follow that or you're busting code, and as well as a vacant commercial space registration program, which is a neat idea, and that people who are interested in developing in your area can go to that listing and, and see what's available. And that is a fee-supported structure. So, we, we thought that that was a good start, a good kickoff to that conversation, and we've asked for more information. Any questions?
Watching Tax Committee, have you met?
There's nothing to report. We did not meet since the last meeting.
Champs and Lights?
Yes. We have been discussing the special lighting downtown. Again, that ties in with the marquee. But we are still moving forward with exploring the possibility of having the lights be attached to the buildings and utility poles, because the bigger fix may take a lot longer and is an expensive fix. So, we're still in the process of getting more information to decide whether that lighting will go up. Another thing we talked about is the Christmas tree, the holiday tree, and a couple of trees have been set aside or have, and what we need to do is get public works out there to take a look at them. And there's a new process this year for having the tree brought down so that there's not so much damage to it. We also are talking about an honorary tree letter, and some suggestions have been brought forward, and we'll be voting on that soon. The next meeting will be June 19th at 3:30 here at City Hall.
On to the mayor's report. Last meeting, I gave you guys the, the draft of the retreat summary, and I got questions, Mr. Deener, but from no one else. Or is everyone else comfortable with the summary? Okay, I'm going to have Brandy publish that then, put it on the website. Wonderful. It's spring cleanup. Hopefully, you guys know that. I had the privilege of spending the first half of my day today riding around with public works. They work awful hard because I, before I could get out of the truck many times, they had the stuff, we were out in McCormick Woods where there wasn't a lot of stuff to be had, some barbecues and patio furniture and things. But I, I look forward to that every year, doing that. And I've been, I talked to Commissioner Stokes today and about a letter of support on the park concepts. He has some concerns. We, in our parking swap, we've agreed that there's 11 stalls there that are two-hour stalls that are set aside for the park, and his concern is that as we expand the park down there, that there would always be at least 11 stalls for the park. And I assured him of that, that he would like a letter from us that, that we would, you know, agree to that. And I think it has to have some language that, of course, that it's their lease with DNR, and provided that they continue to lease that property from DNR, that we would provide at least 11 parking stalls. Is there anybody, any heartburn with me writing a letter to that effect? Mr. Clausen?
I don't have a problem with writing a letter, but I do have a question. Is the property that we're going to develop into a park the property that the port currently leases?
Correct. And, and some of their actual property. So, we don't actually own any of the property that we're, and that's why I need their letter of support.
I understand that. It's just, we probably would want to make sure that we communicate with the port that they should, once this project is complete, inform DNR, because their lease rate goes to zero.
Yes. Yeah, so why wouldn't they want to lease it if it...
Well, we just need to make sure that they make that connection is all. So, that's really...
Yep. So, I think with, everybody's heads are nodding, I think. So, I will work on a letter and get that out to the port, because I think that, I think it has a lot of value to get a letter from them as we apply for grants and other opportunities. On the 720 building over here, Mr. Bond's new office building, they're hanging sheet rock. We're on the construction phase versus the demolition phase. We had a few surprises, couple of beams, didn't have attachments like modern code require, some electrical challenges, and what was the other? The duct work. Oh, that's right. Because the beam, the, some posts had to get moved, duct work had to get moved, and also, some of the duct work was just in hollow wall voids, which didn't meet code either. So, we had to spend some money. So, we are roughly 5% over, and I've got 10% change order authority, and it's, and it's currently about $14,750. So, we're on the downward side of it, though, and projected to have it, him the moving in, his staff moving in there first week in July. So, and then, yesterday, Mark and I met with Puget Sound Energy about two different potential undergrounding projects, the first being the one on Bay Street. And we talked to them about new street, a new street lighting plan and breaking the project into four quadrants so that it isn't such a big undertaking. I, beyond that, we had the meeting, and they know what we're asking of them, and more to come. We talked to them about a street light that has, you know, an extension on it so that these lights...
Banner.
Yeah, and we talked about locating two lights right at Frederick so that we can, in a pulley system on them, so that we can easily put the banners up and down, irrigation, tubing within the banner and a hanger. So, we gave them a laundry list of wishes, and we'll see what it costs after that. The other more pressing one is, we went down and walked down by the Titus Project. As we know, we're getting a new wider sidewalk there, and we had to see an opportunity of, gosh, if that whole frontage is going to get tore up, shouldn't we consider undergrounding that? Well, when you get down there, so, the other aha moment we had was, there's that utility pole right in the middle of our pedestrian path that has to get moved that serves the Marley, and really, the only place that they can relocate that pole will be right in the middle of our pocket park. They've got to move it over and out of the way. I wasn't too excited about that. So, so if the scope kind of went from three poles to about seven poles, going from Blackjack Creek all the way to the pedestrian path or that pole that, and undergrounding that. Currently, the hotel and the Marley have underground power. I don't know the number, and to be honest, we really don't have any money. And so, first, I'm working on the number. I think we need to get the bids opened on Tremont. Spent some time today looking at what could we not do, or postpone, and we really don't have any big-ticket items that aren't, you know, coming out of dedicated funds, because we've put all of our horsepower into Tremont. So, I, part of me says, gosh, we got to find a way to do this, but I don't know that we can find a way to do it. So, Mr. Deener?
And so, my first reaction is, well, could we at least lay conduit for undergrounding? But that's probably the most expensive part of that project.
And the, the beauty of us doing this is the 60/40 split with PSC if we actually execute the undergrounding. If we just laid conduit and set vaults, we've got to pay 100%.
Okay.
You know, they're going to design it, and then we, we'd lay those conduits and vaults, and we'd pay 100%, where if we do the full meal deal, we get, we only have to pay for 40% of it. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that number's 200,000, 300,000. I, my gut tells me it's a pushing a million-dollar project to underground all that, but I honestly don't have the number yet.
Do we have to pay for the undergrounding in front of the Titus Project, or, or just the areas outside of his project?
His, his, his building gets undergrounded from the existing service poles. So, there is no, he doesn't have a need to underground it. It's aesthetics. If we're getting, if we're getting new frontage there, we have an opportunity. You know, it's, it's all, the sidewalks all tore up.
Right.
You know, it's digging a ditch at that point and, and putting it underground. So, I don't have the answers yet, but I did, we did have the meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to brief you on, on where, where we're headed with it, and hopefully, at the next And hopefully at the next council meeting have a number and shortly after that we'll open a bid that's extremely low on Tremont and we'll have some found money.
Do a bake sale?
In a bake sale. That's, there we go. So that's, that's what I have for my, my report. Mr. Dorsey?
I have nothing unless anybody has questions.
I do have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
Um, can you let us know if you don't know the answer now, what is happening with the flagpole at the triangle?
Tell you.
Okay.
So it came down, January first, we had the storm, and I think, matter of fact, you reported it. I mean, the pole been there for eighty-five years, was rotten in, in the base. And the wind brought it over into the transmission main. It's, you know, it's probably not the best location to have a flagpole right next to the transmission main because it fused itself to the, the, the transmission main. Had to be cut off of, in pieces. It came, it came, had to be removed by PSC in pieces. So there's a base and there's a plaque that, for when it was dedicated in nineteen thirty-three. We, I think we all got an email, you know, about it. I've sent, they've since emailed me back about other locations. And I've talked to Commissioner Stokes about a potentially, potentially locating it over here at the boat launch between the torpedo and the screw that's, the, the propeller that's put over there. So there's possibility and Public Works is looking into whether or not that base can be removed and saved or not. We know the plaque can be. It's whether or not there's anything salvageable there or not. And I don't, I don't have answers yet. We're looking at other locations, but I just don't feel that that's a good location. In particular, if you wanna do some type of a flag ceremony, you gotta stand out in the middle of the street. Where if we've got it maybe over at the boat launch on the grass and, and, you know, somebody wanted to do a Memorial Day service or something of that nature that could be easily done over there. So that's, that's the, currently the site we're looking at to relocate it.
And also recognize that that triangle is, you only have to try to maneuver through that, that, between three thirty and five. You see a lot of crazy things going on. And all day long, I hear people coming Bay Street thinking they have the right of way to go south on Klein. And so that triangle's gonna have to get modified at some point. It's gonna have to be a roundabout or it's gonna, it's gonna have to be reconfigured. Somebody's gonna get whacked, so that is, we're gonna wanna move it for that anyway, so.
Okay, other questions, Mr. Dorsey? Glad I had an answer. Mr. Bond? Sharon?
Nothing for me either.
Brandy?
I'm afraid I'm probably gonna take all three at the time, so.
Uh-oh.
Legislative updates for you guys. So I was fortunate enough to attend the Washington Association of Public Records Officers Training on Thursday. And in that training, we received a summary from the State Auditor's Office of two public records request bills that were actually signed by the governor last week. And so I wanted to provide you what those are. And then there's two other legislations that went before and signed by the governor that is related to public records as well. Those are a little bit short. So the first one is, so right now, public disclosure of global positioning system data corresponding to residential addresses of public employees and volunteers are now exempt. So basically what that means is law enforcement, when they take their vehicles home, there's some sort of data censoring on the vehicles that can capture where their home address is. So when they're, so if they're out on call, those, it activates the patrol car and then it shows them to where they're going on site. And previously, public records have, requests have been put in for that, not for our jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions. And showing where a police officer lives could be not the best safety measure. So legislators recognize that and have exempted that now as part of the Public Records Act. The other part of the Public Records Act that they, what they called harmonized with the executive session is currently, public records regarding security breach disclosures are exempt. We cannot release those to the public. However, when those situations arise, we have to talk about those in open session. And so legislators recognize the impact that it could have to the public. And so they are now exempting this conversation for public disclo- public conversation and is, and can be used in executive session for discussion. So they've matched that up. And then House Bill fifteen ninety-five covers public records request cost. So both of, actually all, all of these legislative actions will be effective July twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. And I will be modifying our public records request policy to accommodate these. So back to fifteen ninety-five regarding cost. So we will now be able to charge scanning costs. Records upload to emails, cloud-based database storages, or other means of electronic delivery. It'll be five cents for each electronic file. We will also be able to charge ten cents per gigabyte of records transmitted in electronic format or for use of agency equipment to send records electronically. The ten cents per gigabyte probably won't use quite a bit from us. I think where that's meant to capture is local agencies, or agencies that have body cams. And they request that footage and it's, could add up quite a bit. And all of these charges are not meant to be cost recovery. It's just puts more teeth into when people put in public records request that they're serious and that they are wanting the information, not just to overburden local governments. And so they have set a default rate of those rates that I just discussed. The other avenue is that you can actually do a full cost analysis and say, okay, so if it, if our jurisdiction, it costs more than ten cents, we have to do a full-blown cost analysis, see what that is, adopt it. So they, the legislators have allowed us to adopt a default schedule, which I think that makes sense for us, is to, to see if these fees work. And if it doesn't, then maybe we can look for a cost analysis. The other mentionable comments regarding fifteen ninety-five is botch request. So botch request, some little, some jurisdictions have received public records request, which is computerized. And it's transmit every so often within a twenty-four hour period. So for example, somebody will put in a public records request for, I want all emails for all documents on, that were transmitted to the city on June twenty-first. And then ten minutes later, they're gonna say, I want all documents that were submitted or captured June twentieth. And then ten minutes later, they're gonna put in another public. So it's, it's to recognize that, hey, if somebody's sending a commu- a computerized, botched request, that the state legislators recognized that, that it, you can't do that. We can deny it based on that reason alone. And then the other thing that they've done for overly broad requests is currently, we can't deny a request because if it's too broad or burdensome on the city. What we've been told is that it just has to be an identifiable record. Most of the documents that they're requesting are identifiable. But they did say that we can deny a request. We consider it, we can consider it a non-valid public records request if they ask for all records of the city. Provided that the request of all records regarding a particular topic or containing a particular keyword or name shall be considered a request. So for example, sometimes they just want, I want all your city records for the last twenty years. That's really not an identifiable record. We're not gonna consider a public recor- records request. You need to narrow your scope. So those are some of the things from that bill that will be incorporated in our policy and brought before you for your consideration. Yes?
Before you move on, can I ask a public records request question? Because I just, would you clarify the use of private, personal telephones at council meetings or our committee meetings? Because it's my understanding, like at our economic development meeting, we, we have members of the community there that, you know, will be there and they will have their phones out. As well as some council members will have their phones out. Now, it's my understanding that if they access their phone during a meeting, that that is, can be subject to a public records request. Is that correct?
Correct. So a few years ago, there was a jurisdiction that received a public records request that wanted all of the actions, a couple, a couple jurisdictions were, received this request. They wanted all of the action that was being done or reviewed on a particular or all the council members' phones or electronic devices during a council meeting. And that jurisdiction had the capability of doing that or producing it. But I think if we look to the, the Neeson case out of Pierce County or Kitsap, Pierce County or City Tacoma, Pierce County. So they went ahead and rolled it if, if it's on a personal device and it doesn't relate to the conduct of city business, it is not a public record. However, if you're doing it during city business, it, it leads the public to believe that you're conducting city business and they're gonna put in a request for that. And then you have to, you know, the, the thought is that you're gonna have, your, your device is gonna be subject to the public disclosure. Then you're gonna have to personally go through all of those, whatever they're asking, and weed out what is personal, what is business. And then hopefully that satisfies the requister. And then this, the jurisdictions that, that you're talking about, it did not satisfy the requister, it went to the court. And so then they had to do an in-court review. So basically, they took all the records, the judge went through and reviewed them and determined, yes, we believe, yes, you, you know, these are not city-related. These aren't. So it, it's kind of a nightmare if you want to do that. We're fortunate enough that we haven't had that issue, but I know other jurisdictions have. Thank you. So it's not a public record, but it could be asked upon.
There could be a request for it and it may be cumbersome for people that are joining, you know, our committee. So I will probably just let them know at the beginning of the meeting that there's that potential.
Correct. And I, there's a jurisdiction just recently, within the last couple of weeks, that the, the council actually passed a resolution that says, hey, during council, regular council meetings or committee meetings, any meetings of the council, personal devices will not be used. So that's, that's an option that this body has as well. Okay, so any questions on the fees for public disclosure and how we can move forward with that? Okay. So then the last summary that I have is House Bill fifteen ninety-four. And what this relates to is that any public records officer has to have additional training. And that additional training is specifically for particular issues related to the retention, production, and disclosure of electronic documents, including updating and improving technology information services. So lucky for myself, this is pretty standard in all of the training that I receive. So there's no additional cost that it's gonna be put on this jurisdiction. So that's great. The other thing is, they've clarified the five-day response. So when we see, when we receive a request, we can, we have a couple of things that we have to do. We have to notify them how long it's gonna take, if we have a responsive record. One of the options is we can seek clarification. And so standard practices, we're gonna seek clarification. We don't understand your request. Please, you know, tell us what you're looking for in more details. And then, once we receive that, then we'll tell you how long it's gonna take. Well, the legislators had said, no, you can't do that. So whether you are sure or not sure what kind of records they're looking for, you still have to give them an estimate of how long those records are gonna take. Even though you don't know what they're looking for, you have to give your best guess. So that's a little different, but it is what it is. A couple more things. The legislators are requiring public records request logs to be kept for jurisdictions. So we're to maintain public records requests, which include each request, the identity of the requister, date of receipt, text of request, description of records produced, description of records redacted, withheld, and the reasons, and the date of the final disposition. And because the council is forthcoming and is head of the game of most jurisdictions, you guys adopted GovQA, which keeps track of all of that. And previously before that, the clerk's office kept a Excel spreadsheet of all of those. So again, no additional cost or burdensome on, on our jurisdiction for that particular addition. The other things that have been added is for some people that go and do recording for documents up at the Kitsap County, they are going to be adding a dollar surcharge. And what that additional dollar surcharge for is to go to the Attorney General's Office Program that establishes funds for local governments to help consult, train, and improve on records retention for local governments. So if your jurisdiction is having issues with this, you can go to the Attorney General's Office and they will help, help your jurisdiction. And that is, program will be in effect until two thousand and twenty. And then they've also implemented a competitive grant program that is effective until two thousand and twenty. And this is through the state archives. It's a one-time use, basically, to improve inform, uh, technology, information systems for records retention, management, disclosure, and retaining related training. So for other jurisdictions, there's some opportunities to improve their system. So thank you for bearing, bear with me on this long, convoluted, boring, public records request topic. But in the next couple of months, you'll see a draft before you that should satisfy all of this. And other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you for the report. We're to our citizens' comment period. Anyone wishing to address the council? Yes, Jerry.
Jerry Harmon, I had two things. First of all, I know nothing about what I'm asking here, but it just seems strange that it says water on your, what you, on the fees. It said sewer wastewater treatment facility fee. And it says per E R U and it's three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven. But then it says McCormick Land Company, one through ten, per E R U is eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And I'm wondering why such a big difference? The other's almost four times, but I know nothing about it. It just seemed like a big difference in the cost.
If I remember correctly, the, the, it's a surcharge. So the McCormick folks pay the other fee and an additional fee on top of that also.
Okay. I mean, I know nothing about it, so it just seemed, you know, reading this, like there's a big difference here. And another thing, on the, I don't know if I'm saying it right, the glyphosate roundup. Most of the other European countries have already banned Roundup. It's not being used in a lot of countries. And I, I read an article about a week or two ago that when they're doing blood tests now, Roundup is showing in our blood samples. It's not a good thing to be using and I think you need to think about it. There's gotta be some other way to do it because it's a dangerous chemical. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other wishing to comment? Okay, seeing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I got a kind of a good of the order thing.
Okay, sorry.
At our last utilities committee meeting, we talked a bit about the Tremont bid opening. And I indicated I'd like to be there for that and I think there was other interest by other members. So we may want to consider advertising for that if there's enough people wanting to show.
No, public notice that, please. I intend to be there too. Yes, Mr. Gollum.
For the good of your, uh, two things. One, I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to drive from Gorst into town on Bay Street, but I got in the habit of taking the detour. And the other day I decided to drive through because it was open. And what, what a change. Though, there, there must have been three dozen trees taken off that hillside. And when you come into town now, instead of coming through like a tree tunnel, it's now open, it's wide, and it's very welcoming. So I commend the city for taking the opportunity, when that highway was closed, to take those trees down. And as I understand it, we have a public, or employee at the city who operates the machinery to save us some money. Is that true?
That's true. And that, unlike the boulevard where, where we're completed with that, we only had a short window there. They've done the heavy lifting there, but there's still some cleanup to be done and cutting the stumps down low, like, and cleaning it up like we did on the boulevard. So it's not, it's not a finished product. on the Boulevard. So, it's not, it's not a finished product yet. So.
Looks great. Second point, going around town, been asked a few things. Among others, Clancy, have we elected a pirate in city council because of the eye patch? And I said, no, we have not. And the other question is, have we elected a drunken pilot because of my speech? And again, no, we have not. What it is, is the first time I've addressed this, it's, it's called Bell's palsy. And it's an infection of the major nerve that goes up and controls your motor skills, your motor, your movement, your muscles. And that's a temporary inflammation. And within a short period of time, I'll be back to talking normal and talking more. So, if you couldn't hear me, that's why. I'm done.
All right. Meeting's adjourned.